Had a little accident yesterday evening and he's gone to the doctor this morning. So he asked me to hold the court this morning. So we're going, uh, go right along with the program. Oren, would you lead us in a word of prayer?
Dear Lord, thank you for another day. We ask that you be with us, be with this court as they make decisions that affect our county. Or we ask that you be with every citizen here, Lord, as we try to move forward and make a good difference in all the world. We ask, Lord, that your blessings be upon us. We ask all this in Jesus' name.
May it be. Will you join me in the pledge to the country and state? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one individual. Public forum, do we have anybody with the public wanting to speak? Approval of the minutes of the August twenty-sixth, twenty-five and special session of September the third, twenty-twenty-five.
I couldn't find anything wrong that I read over. I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Discussion and action on the contract between Grofton ISD and Trinity County Elections. He is administrator. Is Priscilla here?
I know she's in the office.
Well.
Come back to it or come back to it?
I guess it's just a standard deal. It's up to y'all if you want to approve it.
Basically, the school was reaching out to her to.
To hold elections.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We don't have any official bonds. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number seven, discuss an act on approval of personal action forms.
There's only two in your packet today. First of all, say good morning. You've got two in your packet there that were separations from service.
This is not a hire, is it?
No, these are both separations of service.
They're both left.
Both left. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Priscilla?
I'm sorry, I forgot.
It's okay. We went ahead and approved it. It's just a standard?
Yes, standard contract.
Like you always did?
Yep, yep.
Okay, we approved it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, number eight, discussion and act on approval of complete check register for August twenty-five.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, first off, it is the complete check registered for August of twenty-twenty-five. You can see that our grand total was nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. That includes all your payroll, fringe benefits, and the total vendor invoices of seven hundred thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Lot of money to run this county. Anybody have any questions? Need a little more time to look it over?
Uh, just a question with Commissioner Park. Uh, in Brian and Brian, what did they say their charge is to turn for that one?
Uh, sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight?
It's averaging about sixteen hundred to load, give or take.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Discuss an act on approval of claims and invoices for disaster-related purchases.
So for the period of August twenty-second through September third, we paid a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-two cents in disaster-related invoices, and there is actually some Brian and Brian on that one, Commissioner Law.
Yes, ma'am.
The circumstances on mine, uh, I put quite a bit out on subdivision roads. With all y'all's help, y'all helped me haul it, so I appreciate that as well. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Uh, just one, one thing too, to note that, uh, the ninety thousand, nine eighty thirty-five was to chicken seal one of my county roads, but this was the fourth road that I, I did in precinct two. That was from Arca funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lacy.
I forgot to, for us to sign these minutes, so we're gonna take a minute to sign them.
I'll make a motion to approve the invoices.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the invoices for the purchases. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, discuss an act on the amendment requisitions, purchase policy, and charges made by SB eleven-seventy-two. Increase, increasing the mandatory bid requirement from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand effective, uh, September first, twenty-twenty-five. Ms. Bonnie, do you want to speak on that?
Yes, sir. Uh, that's the new state bill that was passed, increasing the, uh, bid limit so that you do not have to go out for sealed bids if it's a hundred thousand dollars or below. We've been doing fifty thousand or above. So all we're doing is just changing that command on our policy. That will save us a lot of administrative money, obviously. So your fuel and your items like your rock that we normally go out for probably will not require you to go out for sealed bids, as long as it's approved by board.
Really? Well, that's a plus.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Receive information on commercial charge cards, traditional replace Citibank, county credit cards with US cards through the controller's office, uh, and Texas Smart by Co-op effective September first. Want to tell us about that too?
Uh, our, our credit cards have been through the state controller all along. It's probably received, uh, government discounts and other items. They went into a new contract with another credit card company called US Bank, and they have now replaced all of your credit cards, but we haven't sent them out yet. I needed to let you guys know that this is coming. They had a memo, we had everyone need to sign a new acknowledgement of receipt of the new card. You'll activate those cards before we close the old ones out. So this is where your information, um, they'll start sending these out to the existing credit card holders we have. Uh, they only replace the ones that we currently have on record, not any new ones.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve it.
Well, we don't need it. Just receive information.
Just information, did that?
Discussion and act approval of a replacement contract and engaging letter for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four audit result, uh, from accident roads and car and rigs and Embry and all them other folks. Bonnie, I thought we were going out for bids this year.
We did. We haven't even done the twenty-twenty-four audit that we agreed that they would be doing the twenty-twenty-four audit, which is, we're already in twenty, into twenty-five. So this is going all the way back to fiscal year twenty-four agreement that was agreed to for them to do an audit. Uh, in the meantime, they were merged with a new firm called CRI or the Car Rigs in Ingram. Uh, our people that normally do the audit have not changed. They're still there. So the new company wanted a new contract signed with the new firm's name on it. Uh, double-checked the fees, nothing was changed in the fees. And again, this is just a revision of a contract that we already signed last year early uh, for then to do the twenty-twenty-four audit. It is not doing our twenty-five audit, okay, that we're coming up on. So the plan is still to do that, but we've got to finish the twenty-four audit. We're still waiting on financial, uh, intelligence to finish up the bank reconciliations, which I reached out to them this morning and I've not heard back, but we should be finalizing that so we can get this audit over and done with.
But is this for twenty-four or twenty-five?
Yes, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay.
Twenty-four, yep.
All right.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to, uh, go ahead and write the engagement letter. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Discussion and act on approval, the installation of a dedicated internet line to replace satellite network for nine-one-one dispatch, Telet's device as required by the Texas Department of Public Safety.
The DPS off.
John's up here.
Go ahead, Sean. The DPS sent out an email to the dispatcher's jail sheriff's office, um, stating that they would be taking down the old satellite connection for the Telet's computers. Uh, those are the computers that are brand and operated by DPS that they run all their stuff on. And they will be sending out new devices, but we needed to provide an internet connection for, uh, the new motors and such. Um, so for safety and to reduce risk of incidents, uh, we are requesting to put in a new, uh, dedicated fiber line to that for those computers.
Do we have any kind of cost estimate or?
We had a couple. Did we get those, Ms. Bonnie?
Yes, uh.
Yes, there's a, there's a cover sheet. Uh, you probably don't have that.
Thirty-six.
I mean, you've got a quote from Windstream and a quote from Fiberlight that Sean has gone out for on quotes to install that line plus an installation.
Windstream's still the cheapest, though.
At the moment, it, it looks to be technically the cheapest. Um, however, with issues reliability that we have had with Windstream, um, with the nature of this kind of connection, we are, I would like to go with Fiberlight.
Third one says for sixty months, it's six, three, six hundred and thirty versus thirty-six months for eight-twenty. So it looks like.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I wasn't sure you want to lock that in for five years in case the disventures relocate. Because wherever they relocate to if the jail passes or if you move them someplace else later in the next five years, we gotta do a new line, go out again. So three years.
Wouldn't it be, Bonnie, just a, I mean, obviously if they move, it's gonna be a one-time installation fee again. The, the note would stay the same, right? It would just be the installation fee, correct? You're gonna have that anyway. Anywhere you move, you're gonna have an installation fee.
Well, I would say that Windstream is.
And that's, yeah, that's a good point. Uh, the other thing was there is another company that's come into town that's actually laying our new fiber lines. Highline, I believe Sean's, can they remember?
Yes, that is correct. Highline is the one that got the, um, last big, um, grant. And so they are the ones, they came and spoke in Commissioner's court. They're running right now pretty hard and heavy installing fiber throughout the entire county.
So I was also thinking that at that time, we go out for new quotes bids for the entire county with this new service that competitively could be cheaper than Windstream later on. So again, I need your help on deciding, do we just do, do we do this for thirty-six months with our current provider? Uh, or go with a new vendor, thirty-six or sixty months? Either way, in the next three, three and a half years, we should go back out for bids on everything. I just didn't want to get caught, uh, locked into a contract for too long.
What was your, uh, your suggestion was Fiberlight for what reason? Instead of our current Windstream?
Instead of going with Windstream because we have such, um, reliability issues, um, rather than, we get outages constantly. And with Fiberlight being that they are solely wholly dedicated fiber internet where Windstream has all kinds of different things, not to mention Windstream is actually currently just, uh, merged with another company, Unity. So they're in the middle of that, and I've already had to deal with their customer service once, and it was not great. Um, I did, I would like to recommend Fiberlight just because I feel like they should be more dependable than are historic with Windstream.
I, uh, I'll make a motion, we go with Fiberlight. Uh, we don't have to do the sixty months since we're gonna look at this new company maybe coming, so thirty-six month.
You're talking about eighty-one dollar.
Yeah.
Month, so, so I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to go with the thirty-six month.
Fiberlight.
Fiberlight. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Sean?
Yes, sir.
A printer in the judge's office and in, uh, Lisa Rogers' desk. I had her try to print something off, and the printer won't work. What, she said it's real slow. What, what's wrong with it?
I'm not sure. I'll have to take a look at it.
That's the reason she's not here. She's trying to print something off for me, and she said she'd be here when it printed, so.
Okay.
All right.
Maybe the internet is slow. Have to do with the internet probably, slow or something.
Her printer shouldn't be plugged into USB.
Just a. Okay. Next item is budget workshop prepared for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six Trinity County Budget. And I believe we have a copy of, uh, this is the latest you, you just printed, right, Bonnie?
Yes.
Ms. Bonnie, I found a mistake. Ms. Bonnie, I found a mistake on precinct four road bridge. It says that mine was reduced six percent, but there's a mistake on the principal line item. It should be eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five on original budget, and eight, one of the eights got left off. So I did the math on it. It's gonna be about seventeen percent drop on mine.
Yeah, with the adjustment, okay, yeah, because it defines by the original, um, budget line item, so you can print.
Uh, Ms. Bonnie? Do you want to give the court and the audience an update on the, uh, good news? For Vicki?
Yes, good news. It was fantastic yesterday morning, received word that FEMA, we turned, uh, Vicki turned in her administrative time on all of the amount of meetings and everything she attended on FEMA to get the road bridge, one point five eight eight million dollars in reimbursements for road materials. They pay a hundred percent on the administrative. Uh, they're going to be sending us over seventy-nine thousand dollars for her time.
Seventy-nine thousand?
Fantastic, yes. I was just, because it's wonderful.
We don't have an employee of the year award, but we need to make her one. I guarantee you.
She's amazing.
She's awesome.
Hey Bonnie, update on my budget. Uh, the, uh, the treasurer's office is gonna sit down Thursday and try to line out them, uh, see what's actually been spent out of the accounts and see what I can get paid off. So I should, by the end of the week, I should have you something to enter in, uh, on, on my behalf.
I knew you were waiting to hear that.
It's just, stuff's not lining up to where I think it should be or whatever. So we're, we're just gonna go through it with a fine-toothed comb. I'll let you know.
Uh, just briefly, everyone that, uh, had changes, everyone tried best they could. I'd say there are fines in areas they can increase their budgets, they did a good job. Others, just there was no people willing, they couldn't, uh, there was no five percent, there's, you know, three percent, whatever, but they gave what they could. Uh, with all the changes, you now have in reserve three hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Okay? So that's the bottom line there you've got to work with. If you leave all of that in reserve or use some of that to make some adjustments to add back in any of the, uh, you know, recommendations of the other departments and ask for earlier or having to go now, reserve them.
We never know what's gonna come up in the middle of the year. I think we ought to leave it in there, don't you?
As much as we can.
That's my thinking, though. Uh, judge told me we're gonna have a, another budget workshop, I think, Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Well, Bonnie will have his answer, we can add that.
Yeah.
In or whatever thing is fair. Okay?
Bonnie?
Yes?
On this grant writer administration, the system, how much was we figuring in there for a part-time?
Uh, with salary and fringe benefits, developing part-time is twenty-four thousand, four sixty-eight.
And we could pay that out of the seventy-nine thousand that we got for administration?
I take that back, it's less than that. It's seventeen thousand, two eight.
Seventeen thousand. I think that'd be a, a good asset. Y'all want this body to put it in the budget?
I think that, I think it's a benefit to the county because she hustles so much grants and works so hard. It's offset a lot of expenditures, and since FEMA's sent us the money, absolutely, I think we ought to grant her that position for sure. That's my thoughts.
She would present, she was young.
No, that's my thought.
Oren? Do we have a list of the part-time employees, uh, with their time?
Yo. Where they are?
Yes.
Um, we should did that. Yes, sir, I'll have one, right, now that you do that. Should I give you two words?
You can have that by next Tuesday's meeting.
These hours.
You don't have any hours, like, for this?
Yes. Yes, the twenty-nine and a half, is it, is it twenty-nine and a half, Richard?
Two and a half.
Twenty-nine?
Two and a half, yeah.
Twenty-nine and a half. Less than thirty, that's be less than thirty, right?
Less than thirty, yes. But some of them are pretty close, and if they are, they need, the department head, elected officials needs to, uh, send them to the house before the, they run over that time.
Does that go fiscal year or does that go?
That's fiscal year. Fifteen hundred and sixty hours, is that right?
Uh, I think it's right.
I believe it's fifteen sixty. Fifteen sixty, fifteen sixty-four, one, two.
Thirty-four, I believe it is.
Thirty-four, sixteen, thirty-four?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, thirty-four, okay.
Well, we need all the elected officials to check that to make sure we don't run over.
We have recently sent out some emails, uh, to, uh, different officials alerting them to, um, you know, those employees who are being getting close to that threshold.
Okay. I think I can speak for the, the whole court. We appreciate all the elected officials that have made a attempt to help us with this budget. This budget's gonna be tight, and, uh, just want to thank everybody for helping where you could.
Absolutely, appreciate it. Absolutely, appreciate it.
Does anybody have any questions on the budget or comments or...
So, take it off, look at it, all that. It's Tuesday, we're going to meet, correct?
Yes, Judge said we have a meeting Tuesday.
I'd like for the judge to be here, sure.
Sure. Cheers, buddy. Ms. Bonnie, you got anything?
No, sir. Just a bunch of changes, and then we just get on Tuesday and see what we got.
I'll get with you before the end of the week on my budget.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn? A second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.